Notice of warning, proper recovery for open public meetings long as they're satisfied. Notice was properly given, said notice hadn't been transmitted to the Curly News and Star Budget. Said notice hadn't been transmitted to the Curly News and Star Budget on Thursday, January 9th, 2021, as well as posting on the burden board in the clerk's office. What will it call?
Council members Davis, Axcedor R. Paul, Good.
Present.
McKenna.
Present.
McCray.
Present.
Mills-Ransum.
Present.
Vice President Armani.
Present.
Council President Hockaday.
Speaker.
Six members present, one absentee in the form.
Clerk of hearing communications from the mayor.
His honor, the mayor Adrian O'Math has presented the following nominees for vice consent from the government body for Mahir Janadri, the district management corporation, Victoria Williams Brown, Alcohol Beverage Control Board, Nadara Rourke, Esquire, Mississippi Court Public Defender, and Leslie Newsland, Shade Tree Commission.
The bills listed and other financial documents have been sent to the council via email. Public comments will be limited to resolutions and ordinances being considered this evening. Each speaker will have given a total of three minutes before the sound.
Timothy Prio, Fortuna Five, Martin Avenue. I'm bringing something up because in reference to the new hire for economics development, I was sent the application a month ago, the posting a month ago. So I've been sending it out to all my friends. And I've read it very clearly what you last month said was supposed to be five years of experience and everything else. So I sent it out to everybody. As I look at the new resume for this employee that they're going to hire, she doesn't have five years. She has one year. Yes, she has a master's program, but there's also other parts of it that she didn't disclose on her resume, that she is a councilperson sitting in Essex County that should be aware that we should all know what we're hiring, who we're hiring. So there's honesty here. So when someone sends a resume out, that should be the first fault when you don't put the correct information on the resume, when you lack honesty and transparency. So again, we go back to the transparency issue here in the city of Plainfield, that things aren't rushed through. In a way, it looks like this was just a motion to ask for people. I sent this out to a lot of my real estate friends who were sending it out to their friends, but it was all about the five years. And then we're going to hire somebody who has one year and then a political connection. So again, are we a machine here or do we think for ourselves? Because it really looks like we're a machine and we're just paying homage to Essex County, Leaning County, Hudson County, again. Thank you.
We have a motion to close public comments.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions? Public comments are now closed. The ordinances appearing under second meeting have been scheduled for public hearing in second meeting on March 9th, 2020, as advertised. Are there any questions from council on these ordinances? Starting with Councilman McKenna?
Yeah.
Councilwoman McCray?
No.
Councilwoman Mills-Ransum?
No.
Vice President Armani?
No.
Councilman Good?
No.
And Councilwoman Davis?
No.
Okay. These ordinances will be scheduled for public hearing on March 9th, 2020. Okay. Are there any questions from council from resolutions April out? This is our... Starting with Councilwoman Davis?
No.
Councilman Good?
No.
Councilwoman Vice President Armani?
No.
Councilwoman Mills-Ransum?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray?
No.
And Councilman...
Sure. My question really is just a procedural one with respect to A, the CBAC Citizens' Budget Advisory Committee. When is the calendar going to be available for the public with respect to the meetings to review the budget, the release of budget, the CBAC meeting on the 7th?
Ryan, please.
The budget will be brought before council in April. And after that point in time is when the council will set the calendar for when it wants to meet and who it wants to meet with. Now, relative to what normally happens with regard to CBAC, CBAC doesn't see the budget until it's introduced. Now, what I do do beforehand is we have a meeting where we go over basically what will go on, what will transpire so that they have an agenda. But they don't see the budget until council has seen it.
Councilman, I assume the finance committee sets the schedule for the CBAC?
No.
Is not?
Yes.
So is it possible that the finance committee could have that scheduled for the April meeting?
Once we receive the budget, we will get that.
But the budget's a documented calendar.
Once we... Once we receive the budget, I will get with the committee that we will come out with the schedule.
So what date will the budget be released? Because apparently it's a different kind of a budget than we've ever had before. It's not just numbers on pages.
There are two answers to your question. Finance committee will be giving a budget package, and the goal is for that to be in their hands this week. And then we will sit down and meet to discuss what the tender budget looks like. Assuming that there are to be no recommended changes to that budget, then it would be brought forward for the April meeting. And Councilwoman, what will also happen is that the finance committee will then decide based on what the budget looks like, which organizations they want to see. And could they then set forward with a proposed calendar? They certainly could.
If, unless I'm mistaken, charter outlines the budgetary process, and that includes public hearings for all department heads to division heads to appear before department heads and...
That's correct, but there have been a couple of things that have happened over the course of time. There was a time that every division head came before council and before the public to present their budgets. Council mayor may not decide to do that. They may only want to see the department heads.
Is that typical, that council would just choose what, to follow the chartering but not to follow the charter?
We have had different groups come forward. And I'll get space on the information presented in the budget.
You have a question from council? I would ask that, for the courtesy of the entire council, to get the budget dates as soon as practical so that we can all account for the CBAC meetings, which there will be many of them. So it is helpful to have those dates as soon as possible. All right. Do we have consensus to add these items to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Any opposition? Abstentions? These items will be added to the agenda. Would the business administrator please present their items?
Sure. There is one item queued before from the business administrator, therefore from the mayor. Are there any questions?
Starting with Councilwoman Davis?
Yes. So with some of the appointments, I understand that it is the responsibility of the mayor to make appointments. I would like to see for some of the appointments that we don't have people succeed in themselves, but instead we get new people so that way we can have some fresh thought to some of these boards and commissions. I'm glad to see that on the CIG board, we have a new business owner on there. But hopefully in the future, instead of us having people simply succeed themselves, we have new people to choose from because we do have over 50,000 residents in the city. So hopefully we can find ways to attract more residents to be simply engaged through boards and commissions. Thank you.
Councilman Good?
No.
Vice President Armani? No questions. Councilwoman Mills-Ransum?
No.
Councilwoman McCray?
No.
And Councilwoman McCann?
Yeah, I have one question on item P, which is the public defender appointment. One, I think going forward, the agenda should include that this resolution is also requesting a residency waiver. And my second one is this public defender, the resolution doesn't state that this is a full-time and part-time position, but this public defender also is a public defender for the city of Elizabeth and the county of Hudson. When's she going to be here considering Hudson County's pretty good drive of traffic? And Elizabeth is a bigger city, probably a more extensive court calendar than Hudson. Is she part-time? Is she filling?
Council President McRae? Yes. The position of public defender is a part-time position. Generally requires two appearances per week. Appearances are generally, on average, I would say two to three hours per session for a public defender. So it is not uncommon that public defenders, because it is a part-time position, hold that position in various different municipalities. And frankly, I'm pleased that we have someone who's joining the city, who has the requisite experience, has a public defender going forward.
What's the policy if said public defender was, because of her other duties in Elizabeth and Hudson, can't be in Plainfield in court on a particular day?
If a public defender, because it's a salary position, a public defender cannot be present, it is incumbent upon them to find a replacement for that session, either from one of our other two public defenders, or it's not uncommon they have to go in their own pocket to get someone to cover their salary.
And do we, is this not a real appointment, this is a real appointment, correct?
No. Our previous public defender was offered a job in the law department for the city of Trenton, which was a full-time position. Took that position, created vacancy, which caused us to look for someone to fill that place.
And do we look at the end of the year, at the attendance, or whether or not they're subbing out to other public defenders more often than not, to determine if they're not capable of meeting the schedule?
I would think that we, if attendance was an issue, I believe that our court administrator would let us aware of that, and certainly we'd be cognizant of that. I don't think it's a per se, we look at attendance as the overarching issue, but if attendance becomes a problem, we of course can address it.
Did the previous public defender, were they resident in Plainfield? Uh, no, they were not. Do we have consensus to add these items to the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposition? Abstentions? Okay. These will be added to the agenda. Would the Department of Finance please present their items?
Department of Finance has items R through Y. Are there any questions?
Starting with Councilman McCann?
Yeah. So item R, which is the transportation bank short-term loan for approximately $2 million for the pedestrian wall. I just need to kind of go on the record here. We've had the conversations before regarding this loan. It goes against our ability to borrow, goes against our debt limit. We have not started the budget process. The finance committee is going to let us know sometimes in April when that's going to start. So we don't know what our borrowing ability is. We have not seen the capital budget proposal, a plan, that would be a multi-year plan for future capital needs, fire department, et cetera, which can be quite pricey. We don't know what we're going to need to borrow in the future. We've got all this development going on that may require additional investment to support some of that development. And we're making this decision to reduce our borrowing ability by $2 million without any of that information and against pedestrian walls that fail in the high 80% of the time. So I just want to go on record to say that I think this is an idea that's a cartway before the horse, and we're making a decision without fully being aware of our financial situation. And by the way, just because we have the ability to borrow money doesn't mean that we shouldn't necessarily borrow the money and burden the tax burden.
Was there any question?
Sure. I have... Number, letter S, which was for the Aubrey Group. I think that there was an attachment that was missing as far as their proposal on the work that they did previously. And I'm also wondering why we have two different grant consulting development agreements out, one with, under S, with the Aubrey Group, and letter T with Millennium Strategies.
Why Millennium can't pick up the grant?
Just describe the usefulness of using the two different vendors for grant writing.
The Millennium Strategies has a much broader focus. They're looking at grants across multiple divisions and departments. Because we opened up the Plainfield Performing Arts Center last year, we thought it was imperative that we look for various funding sources to help us move forward with regard to the arts and if we could find anything around infrastructure and everything else. So their focus is purely on the arts and the performing arts center. And so what we decided to do was carve it out, and that's the focus of that group. Millennium has a much, much broader focus. And again, they've been working with all of the other departments across a broad cross-section of opportunities. But we, again, we thought it was imperative that we give the arts a fair shot at succeeding instead.
With respect to the Millennium, which is the next number, letter T, in the resolutions, there was a section in their agreement, their proposal, which is part four, which states that they provide a monthly report on the grant status, grants that they've applied for, and grants that are in the process. I noticed there's a lot of grants from last year that are way out, which is typical in the awarding process, so that some of them are summer, this fall, winter. So I would ask that with our finance reports, that we get that, a copy of that report as well, to see the grants that they're applying for and that we're winning as part of our monthly reporting.
I don't have an issue with that. All the cabinet received their reports today, and so I can certainly make it available.
Then U, which is the authorization of current temporary appropriations, which we're calling emergency appropriations. So in January, we appropriated temporary appropriations through March because we didn't have a budget, and we're beginning that process as we discuss sometime in April. Now we're being asked to provide additional appropriations through June, so we're basically going to fund half the annual budget of last year. And I'm kind of frustrated with this kind of thing, and I think mainly because the budget happens every year, it's a similar document every year, the calendar is the same every year, but we reinvent the wheel and recreate the schedule for the hearings, and notice that every single year kind of, as the budget is released. And I really think it's more appropriate that the city get appropriations monthly beyond the March. I think you get January through March, January through March was appropriated in January, I understand that. And then if the budget process is going to continue to drag on, then the city should request appropriations to operate for another month. So we should request that in March, drop operating funds for April, and April for operating funds in May, and May for operating funds in June. Because in essence, we could end up going through this and we're appropriating the entire budget when there's nothing to deal with as far as saving taxpayers' money and reallocating funds to other areas. So I think this kind of slowly appropriating funds for the entire year is a little much of a stretch for me. So that's my comment. And then I have a comment, a question with respect to V and W, which are both transfers from 2019 accumulated calendar budget to put into the accumulated expenses trust. And they seem very similar, and I don't know if it's because of the wording. Is one an authorization to remove the money from the two, I believe it was the two police accounts? And then the other one is the authorization to then place it in reserve? We don't do that, but then... Because the memo attached was identical for both resolutions, so...
We wanted it to be clear before council that this is a two-step process. We move the salaries and wages to the accumulated assets account, and then from the accumulated assets account, we took another step to move it into a reserve account. And that way, it was clear, it was fully transparent what was going to happen to that money.
Okay. And that's what I assumed it was, but I just wanted that to be explained publicly so that everyone was clear on that. And then my last point is with respect to letter X, which is the transfer of $30,000 from 2019 into the Storm Recovery Trust. Can you outline what the Storm Recovery Trust is and what the balance is prior to its...
What I can tell you is that that's normally used for what is better known as snowstorms. We didn't have a lot of snowstorms during the year, so we want to take advantage of the money that we didn't spend against snow removal and all, and put it into a trust account so that should we ever have a bad snowstorm, we would have some funds available to supplement the budget if that proved to be the case.
So it's a specific rainy day fund for storms? That is correct, okay. And what's the balance of that fund now?
I have to look at the balance. I didn't write a note for what that balance is, but I'll send that to council tomorrow.
How long do those trust funds last? Do they have to be used or moved or transferred within a period?
For a long time. There's no date, there's no limit in terms of the aging of a trust account.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilwoman McCray, any questions?
No.
Councilwoman Mills-Ransum?
Yeah.
Councilman Armani? Vice President? Yeah, just one. So in regards to S, so the Aubrey Group, what is their level of success when it comes to applying for grants for the city? I know that we just, we used them last year, is that correct?
They've been engaged by the city for 11 months now. And we had nine grants submitted.
And what's their level of success in being awarded those grants?
So far, we have not been awarded any grants.
Compared to level T, how many has Millennium applied for and gotten?
I didn't count, we applied for, it's a lot. What we've gotten is $777,000 worth of grants from 11. And when you start looking at what they've done, there's a whole host of grants that they've submitted to us to take a look at, and for one reason or another, we made decisions not to take action. There are probably at this point in time, a million dollar worth of grants pending with Millennium, plus there are more to come up every week when we look at their analysis. And so that's part of what happens there, right? We get a monthly report that tells us all the successes, all the decisions made by management to proceed or not proceed, and going forward, what's pending. We get the same thing from Aubrey. The issue or the challenge with that is that it's a much narrower niche in terms of being able to go after grants. When you look at the arts and the infrastructure around the arts, there aren't as many foundations, trusts, or other groups that give money. So it takes a lot longer from a searching perspective than what we're looking at with regard to what Millennium is looking for. There are many more grants available when you look across the whole spectrum.
But I would ask, or I would follow up, given that Millennium is more, their focus is more broad, could it be more feasible that they handle those kinds of grants as well with their portfolio?
Is it feasible? I would say, yes, it's feasible. I think when you look at part of what we're hoping to accomplish, one of the objectives of the organization is to provide opportunities for firms that haven't been in the mainstream in the past. This is a female-owned company. So part of the challenge is, how do you offer minority firms an opportunity as well? So the intent here is to really give them another time period to be successful. If they're not successful, then you have to make other decisions.
I understand, but I would also say, it's good to support minority businesses for sure, but because of the numbers, in terms of what they pulled up relative to what they awarded last year, it simply just does not make sense. Councilman Good?
No.
And Councilwoman Davis?
Yes. So back to letter R, if you could kind of just explain the purpose and what step are we in the process of financing and where we are in terms of beginning construction of the pedestrian wall? Because I know we did the bond ordinance, so where is this? So what part is this that, resolution R, and what's the purpose of it?
The purpose of the resolution R is from the transportation and infrastructure bank, it's a note from the city saying, yes, we will owe you $2,955,000 as a result of your efforts to go ahead and build the North Avenue Pedestrian Mall. So it's language that they insisted upon from the perspective that, yes, we've done a bond ordinance, we've also done a resolution, basically verifying or authorizing us to go forward and file the application for the law. Now what happens is, since we are 90% down the road in terms of financing, they want the city to provide a note saying, yes, we are indebted to them $2,955,000, which is a fact, or will be a fact once the documents are signed. So this is just one more step in the legal process around the financing and really the borrowing of $2 million.
So how many more steps do we have to go? And then how close are we to beginning construction?
I will only answer the fact that we are close now from a closing perspective, so the closing date will be set once this resolution is approved. It could be as soon as March 11th. So after that, I would defer on the other questions.
And for that, we can respect and welcome big contracts, and then we'll begin construction work for concrete, et cetera. So we're looking at sometime maybe June, July.
Okay. I just want to go on record that I was on White Avenue a few weeks ago, and I could not find parking over there, and most of the parking spaces were taken up by residents, and it wasn't casual there. So I just want the record to show that we have a parking problem over there before we even get to the pedestrian wall. But not onto item U. So I think Councilwoman McKenna kind of expressed some of the concerns that I had, and at this point, we're already appropriating 50% of the budget. Do you expect this, do you expect the administration to come back and ask for another appropriation before we finish the budget process?
That's not my expectation. I would expect that if we follow past practices, that depending on the meeting schedules at all, it would be my goal to see that the budget gets adopted and met.
Okay. If you can kind of just explain for the benefit of the public, B and W again, and do we have processes in place to really prevent some of these high payouts? I know they're with police and fire, so I know that's kind of difficult. If you could just kind of explain that? If you could just kind of explain that?
Well, when you start talking about, you know, accumulated absences, we are currently on the hook for over 8,200 days worth of accumulated absence, you know, which is worth in excess of 2.7 million dollars. So we want to build the reserve up so that it's not as budget impacting on the public. Are there things that can be done? Yes, there are some limitations, you know, and we're putting stronger measures in place so that, you know, there are limits. The state has also come forward with regard to absences, limiting you to 15,000, you know, days, but, but again, right now, we've got over 8,000 days that we are liable for.
Right. So looking towards the future, what is in our personnel, I know we have state regulations, but also what is in our personnel policy to kind of just remedy this problem and make sure that we're not getting off these high payouts moving forward?
If I could answer that. Personnel policies wouldn't ever help us when it comes to payouts for accumulated sick vacation days. These are contractual, by and large, contracted with the bargaining units. So we are, I guess, depending on what side of the negotiation you sit, at the mercy of agreements that have existed long before any of us were here. Do we always try negotiations to find ways to limit that amount? Certainly we do. However, that for everything we try to, we try to get, we have to give something as well, and that's what negotiation is. So we're at the mercy of these agreements, and so I don't think our policies would really be of any help to us at all. But it is an issue, and I think what Mr. West is saying, we have to prepare for this day, which will come, and we're taking the steps to do that.
Understandable. Thank you. For resolution Y, can you just kind of explain, Mr. West, is the city foreclosing on this law?
Yes. Well, we request your permission before closing.
And have you made a sense to help these property owners before we got to the stage of foreclosure?
What I can tell you is we have certainly sent out a number of notifications to the individuals prior to this point. You know, help, we have a number of different, you know, things that we make the public aware of that are, you know, what I would call a part of the toolkit, where people can look at it and make decisions. But usually, to get to this point, you are multiple years behind in your taxes.
Thank you.
And that's a problem.
Director West, with respect to S, S and T, is there any duplicative efforts in terms of the grants that are being applied for?
I would say the answer to that is, is no. We're working rather hard to make sure that we don't duplicate efforts. You know, the Aubrey Group is truly around arts and related kinds of art grants and funds, and so we look to have that team of individuals that working that, you know, to be consistent and work with the Aubrey Group around that as opposed to working with Millennium.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So we're going to take these individually, since I imagine that it may not be consensus for each one. So we'll start with R. Do we have consensus to add R to the agenda? A clerk can have a roll call.
No.
Good?
Yes.
McKenna?
No.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills-Ranson?
Yes.
Vice President Amati?
Yes.
Items added to the agenda.
S, please. Can we have a roll call for S?
For S. Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McKenna?
No.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills-Ranson?
Yes.
Vice President Amati?
No.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Items added to the agenda.
Can we have a roll call for T?
Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McKenna?
No.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills-Ranson?
Yes.
Vice President Amati?
No.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Items added to the agenda.
Can we have a roll call for V?
Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McKenna?
No.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills-Ranson?
Yes.
Vice President Amati?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Items added to the agenda.
Can we have a roll call for U?
Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McKenna?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills-Ranson?
Yes.
Vice President Amati?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Items added to the agenda.
Can we have a roll call for U?
Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McKenna?
No.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills-Ranson?
Yes.
Vice President Amati?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Items added to the agenda.
Can we have a roll call for V?
Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McKenna?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills-Ranson?
Yes.
Vice President Amati?
Yes.
Items added to the agenda.
Do we have consensus for Y? X, do we have consensus for X?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. In the opposition, extensions, added to the agenda. Do we have consensus for Y?
Yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, extensions, added to the agenda. Will the police department please present their items?
The police department has one item on the agenda, which is item Z. We've added information that due to an emergency situation that we had on Thursday, I believe, there was one of our systems in the server room went completely down. We had to get approval in order to move forward and have the work done, which could have caused damage to close to $1 million worth of items in the server room.
Any questions, starting with Councilwoman McKenna?
I was just curious as to what account that was being taken.
That's capital account.
That's capital account?
Yes.
Councilman McCray? Councilwoman Mills-Ranson?
Yes.
Vice President Amati?
No.
Councilman Good?
Director, are you saying that because of the emergency situation, we followed the entered into an agreement with the people, with the company in this resolution, is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's what I'm saying. They started work today because of the certain, one of the server rooms, the system went completely down. So they can't go above a certain temperature, and we were way past that.
Is this also one to address the heating and cooling problems here in the court as well, or just the police station?
This is totally separate from this. This is in the server room that's specific to the equipment for IT as well as the phone systems. However, this is the company moving forward that we would like to use with the work that's going to be done, the police department and court as well.
How soon can we see that on the agenda?
Well, we're working on it. I mean, we have, you want to speak on it?
Well, there was a question raised earlier about the capital budget. The capital budget will also be coming forward on the April agenda. And one of the items that's on the, on that is a $1.5 million HVAC replacement tied to this building. You know, so we pushed it out, trying to buy time. We then found this one particular vendor who has a very cost-effective proposal for the two systems that they're going to be deploying, and hopefully, they've got a better solution for the remaining units that need to be replaced. So we're coming far below the $1.5 million, but there's an estimate to replace all the equipment that costs us a million and a half.
I just have a follow-up question, so maybe just a minute to answer this. Can you just kind of explain how we were able to enter into that agreement, even though it was an emergency situation? Who was able to provide approval for that, since we couldn't, since it didn't come before the governing body? And just procedurally, how that works when it comes to like emergencies and stuff like that?
There are major emergency situations that arise where, and because we were two days away from coming before council, you know, administratively, a decision was made that we needed to move forward, you know, and come before council to make the announcement that a condition happened, you know, outside of our control, you know, otherwise, you would have had this in advance. But we needed to move forward. You know, when you look at $37,000 worth of the equipment versus a million dollars being damaged, I think it made good business sense that it was in the realm of responsibility of administration to make the judgment that it was good for the overall city.
And if I may, the code specifically allows for emergency contracting if the business administrator believes that an emergency exists, and our obligation is that to come to council at the next available meeting for authorization of that expenditure. And that's exactly what we do.
So the business administrator makes that decision?
Yes, I mean, yes, as the, as the business administrator is editing the day-to-day operations for the administration.
And brings it to the governing body as soon as possible.
That's correct.
This item was already on the, however, this item was already on the agenda, so we just thought we would.
That's the same steps for authority for storm expenditures.
Exactly. There's one state law, we have it codified in our local code, but there's this state law that has the same emergency contracting provisions, which are often revoked in times of storm as well.
Do we have consensus to add this item to the agenda?
Yes.
In the opposition, extensions, this is added to the agenda. Will the fire department present their items?
Yes, the fire department has two items, double A and A D.
Starting with Councilwoman McKenna?
I have just a question regarding A D, the protein expire software. Would, are there any anticipated cost savings or efficiencies that would be recognized in this purchase?
We're qualifying three different software that we currently use into one software. Which will also allow us to build up other things that we keep going on there, such as mapping and other inspections that we build to do. As far as the price, the cost, no.
So the three, and this, you know, you don't have to get super in the weeds on this answer, but the three software packages that we use now, do they talk to each other?
No.
So three data systems going into one with all the shared information?
Right, correct.
Councilman McCray?
No.
Councilwoman Mills-Ranson?
Yes.
Vice President Amati?
No.
Councilwoman Davis?
Yes. Director, do you have any concerns with this being the sole provider of all that information now, before we had three different services? So if this, for some reason, the software doesn't work, or there's a glitch or something, do you have any concerns that this is all that we have to rely on?
No, we would have the same problem with the other softwares. If they went down, they'd go. This is the reason why we have three softwares now. Our previous system went down, and we had to go out and buy these other softwares in a rush. That's why we ended up with three now. So this could happen with any software, but this software is cloud-based.
So what are the benefits do you see to moving into a cloud-based system?
Oh, the fact that we don't worry about the servers going down, which is the main problem.
Thank you.
We have consensus to add this item to the agenda?
Yes.
In the opposition, extensions, should be added to the agenda. So the Department of Public Works present their items.
Mr. Council President, Mr. Council, I have seven resolutions, AC to AI on the agenda, but I would like to actually pull AC, this is what amendments have been made to that resolution. Let's move forward.
Sure. So AC is being stricken?
Yes.
Are there any questions? Any questions? Councilwoman Davis?
Yes. So for A D, I see that we're rejecting the bid for the cobra and the roof repairs, but the work still obviously needs to get done. Do we have a plan for that work to still get done, even though we're rejecting this bidding period?
Yes, Councilman, the plan is to rebid it, we only have one bidder, and based on the background, if anything, check. Based on us receiving only one bid, they lack experience needed for storage sites and storage work, so we're looking to rebid that, and there's some other language too, which means someone more qualified to do the work.
Okay. For resolution A G, do we know why nothing was left over from previous years, and does this move up the timeline for completion of the Rushmore project?
I mean, this is a drop in budget for the whole entire project. This is like $20,000 in matching funds, and this goes back, this is found money, this goes back to 2004. So that's scope of work here from way back then, that's where this funding came from. So this is just a small portion of the authorized, sort of authorized to make it better than the park. It's a small item.
Thank you.
Councilman Good, any questions?
Uh, no.
Vice President Amati?
Yeah, so in regards to A D, you know, given that we've had this setback and had to reject the bid, what is your anticipation of the timeline of starting and finishing the project?
Okay, well, we have to rebid it first. We're going to go back, change, amend the specs a little bit, and rebid the process, and then once that happens, once we get a bidder, I hope we get several bidders, for the storage of site, I guess, once the project is started, based on what they're finding and the work that needs to be done, we're talking quite a few months, so.
You're expecting this year?
Hopefully, yes, that's our goal, absolutely.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mills-Ranson? Councilman McCray?
Uh, two.
With respect to A F, this is the getting approval to submit a grant and accept the grant. This grant was approved, submitted, and awarded in November of 2019. That's according to the Millennium Consulting, Grant Consulting Services Group proposal. This is up to $600,000 something thousand they've got in grants. This is $531,000 of it. So how is it we're getting a request to approve submitting a grant that we already won in November?
Yes, one grant, and it's a question of the first grant, it's what, NJ DOT, this is infrastructure grant to sell to add to the project. The total cost of projects is like $950,000, $2 million. So this additional grant funding that we're getting to go post the project.
And is this one that they've already applied to?
Uh, yes. Something we're applying to now, based on, based on you guys, we're going to apply to that now, we get to it month before.
Oh, so we have not applied to this?
No.
But we've already gotten, haven't, I believe, haven't already seen the pricing for doing the prospect?
Yes, it's like $950,000, based on how many, it costs like $950,000, $2 million. So any additional, it's grant funding we can get to offset that, what we're trying to get to make.
So our obligation for that was $140,000, something like that, $140,000, and there's some matching funds associated with that?
This grant lasts 150?
This is a county grant. The county instituted, they grant a little over a million and a half, I think, every year for the last three or four years. And we've been getting an allocation, at least the last two years, of $100,000. You know, and we're adding that to prospects so that we don't need new on there or anything to complete the project.
So we're whittling with $400,000. Do you have a cost this up?
I guess whatever we can do to offset, just bring the cost down, because we're trying to get.
Are there any questions? Any questions? Councilman, Councilwoman Davis?
Yes. So for A D, I see that we're rejecting the bid for the cobra and the roof repairs, but the work still obviously needs to get done. Do we have a plan for that work to still get done even though we're rejecting this very period?
Yes, Councilman, the plan is to rebid it, we only have one bidder, and based on the background that we check. Based on us receiving only one bid, they lack experience needed for storage sites and historic work, so we're looking to rebid that, and there's some other language too, which means someone more qualified to do the work.
Okay. For resolution A G, do we know why nothing was left over from previous years? And does this move up the timeline for completion of the Rushmore project?
I mean, this is a drop in bucket for the whole entire project. This is like $20,000, no matching funds, and this goes back, this was found one, this goes back to 2004. So that's scope of work here from way back when, that's where this funding came from. So this is just a small portion of the progress, sort of rise to make it better than the park. It's a small effort.
Thank you.
Councilman Good, any questions?
Uh, no.
Vice President O'Hara?
Yeah, so in regards to A D, you know, given that we've had this setback and had to reject the bid, what would you anticipate the timeline of starting and finishing the project?
Okay, well, we have to rebid it first, we're going to go back, change, amend the specs a little bit and rebid the process, and then once that happens, once we get a bidder, I hope we get several bidders, for the storage site, I guess once the project is started, based on what they're finding, and the work that needs to be done, we're talking quite a few months, so.
You're expecting this year?
Hopefully, yes, that's our goal, absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Mills-Ranceford? Councilman McClair? Councilman McKenna?
Two. With respect to A F, this is the getting approval to submit a grant and accept the grant. This grant was approved, submitted, and awarded in November of 2019. That's according to the Millennial Consulting, Grant Consulting Services Group proposal. This is up to $600, something thousand dollars they've gotten grants, this is $531,000 of it. So how is it we're getting a request to approve submitting a grant that we already won in November?
That's one grant, and it's a question of the first grant, it's what, NJ DOT, this is infrastructure grant to sell to add to the project. The total cost of projects is like $950,000, $200,000, $2 million dollars. So this additional grant funding that we're getting to go for the project.
And is this one that they've already applied to?
Uh, yes. Something we're applying to now, based on, based on you guys, we're going to apply to that now, we get to it.
Oh, so we have not applied to this?
No.
But we've already gotten, haven't, I believe, haven't already seen the pricing for doing the prospect?
Yes, it's like $950,000, based on how many, it costs like $950,000, $2 million dollars. So any additional grant funding we can get to offset that, what we're trying to get to make.
So our obligation for that was $140,000, something like that? $140,000, and there's a matching fund associated with that?
This grant grants?
This is a county grant. The county institute, uh, they grant a little over a million and a half, I think, every year for the last three or four years. And we've been getting an allocation at least the last two years of $100,000. You know, and we're adding that to prospects so that we don't need new on there anything to complete the project.
So we're whittling with $400,000? Do you have a cost this up?
I'm trying to, I guess, whatever we can do to offset to bring the cost down, that's what I'm trying to do.
And then my other question is, just a clarification, the A G, which was the Kids Recreation Trust Fund, that was the, that was related to that extremely proposed letter that we got copied on from free holders, correct? Very two-page letter to say, yes, thank you.
Do we have consensus to add these items to the agenda?
Yes.
The opposition abstentions, okay, should be added to the agenda. Will the Department of Economic Development present their items?
Good evening, council members. I have items A J through A O to present tonight. Are there any questions?
Start with Councilman McKenna.
Yes, so for A J, which is the development agreement for the Park Avenue Randolph redevelopment area. Section 146 of that agreement talks about local hire and local business use percentages, which is 40%, 25% respectively. And then it uses a lot of, not a lot of, it only uses good faith efforts to do this. What do we do to, do we do any monitoring of this, or are we just strictly have a very specific percentage spelled out in the agreement and then hope that they do something?
We do some monitoring, very limited, because we don't have the staff to do kind of a full monitoring of that commitment. What we do do is we send them a list of people who are interested in construction work, and we typically try to get the developers to hold a job fair on their particular site for payment. And then as it relates to vendors, we have a list of City of Plainfield vendors in the construction trades, so A B C Supply Construction would be one. So we have a list, we provide that to the developers as well, but all those vendors have to be competitive in terms of pricing associated with the, with the work, and so we get that feedback that, you know, they were higher than A B C company.
So with respect to the some monitoring that we do, what monitoring do we do? I know we have limited resources.
We have limited resources, so we request a report back to identify how many Plainfield residents were interviewed, how many were hired, and we ask for a report back on the vendors, what vendors, local vendors submitted, because they have to submit to the general contractor.
And is that just those hired by the general contractor, or are those also include those hired by subs?
They, we do include employees of the subs in that list, so it's not just those hired by the general contractor, but also those hired by the subs.
And I won't hold you to it specifically, but how close do we get to this 40 and 25?
We get, we are a long ways from where we would like to be as it relates to employment of Plainfield residents, but we have other ways in which we participate, New Jersey Guild, that's a training program, we send Plainfield residents, give an opportunity to get interviewed for that, go through that process. I don't recall how many actually graduated from the program yet, I don't know if you do.
I think so far about five.
Five, and then?
I think it's updated on slide.
Okay, so those who successfully pass the class then go on to be apprentices with the building trades.
Then my next question was for A K, the, my question with the, with the R A Bs, which is the development area bonds, so those are bonds that are, that are floated by the municipality. They're bonds issued by the municipality for development. So in this case, this, these R A Bs are for Muhlenberg property. Do they, and they're paid for with the pilot proceeds?
Right.
What is left over from the pilot proceeds on this R A B after we pay the debt service?
In this particular case, I would have to get you that information, because again, the pilot or the R A B predates me, so I'd have to get you the specific information on what portion of the R A B comes from the municipality, and what portion of the R A B covers the debt servicing. And so again, this is a non-recourse, so if, for example, the developer decided not to pay the pilot payment, we're not obligated or responsible for the bond payment, meaning the city is not obligated. So, but the specific numbers and the breakdown, I'd have to get that from the actual R A B agreement.
And because these are supported by pilots, do they count against our liability?
No.
On A L, which is related to the Netherlands Village?
Yes.
And I saw briefly the material that you provided to us this afternoon, but what's, so these are HMFA-funded rentals, correct? They get, they get reimbursement from the state?
Yes. The state would actually finance the mortgage or, and/or the rehab of the facility. And so HMFA, they go through their process to determine that, and then what HMFA likes to see is that the pilot is coterminous with the mortgage, and so that's really their standard operating procedure.
And what is the term of the mortgage? Because I assume the pilot?
Yes, the pilot is 30 years, the mortgage term is 30 years. I do have the developers and some of the tenants in the audience related to Netherlands Village, and again, an HMFA pilot is very different than a long-term tax exemption. In this case, though, we have negotiated where we are getting payments in terms of pilot, similar to a market rate project.
And my, my last question, when I looked at the proposed upgrades that are going to be done to the, to the community there, it talked, there was a brief snippet about how there aren't a lot of common area and amenity spaces, but then it started listing upgrades and it hadn't, there were no upgrades to any common area or any spaces. It was like public space, hallways and hallways and ramps, but I didn't see, are there any plans to, these are all, this is all developed, so, back before we had TV rooms and rooms back.
And a bunch of community rooms, so when they say common spaces, that does typically include hallways and those kinds of places. It can be expanded to include community rooms and other amenities within a development.
Is there a plan to do that? Because it did reference that, and I don't know if that meant that they were referencing it in a general term, or if they meant that they were going to put in some improvements for?
I don't recall.
We were going to be, we're putting in a real office.
Okay, you can't be back. Yeah, so I, I don't recall exactly what they were going to pay in, but the developer is here, and they are improving the space. We have letters from the tenants and the tenants' association. This developer met with our economic development committee, and the economic development committee asked for some items. Those items were provided as well to our committee, and this project really is about really improving an existing building and the quality of life for residents in that particular building.
And then my last is related to A M. And I, I have a couple of comments that I share, one of which was we approved this position in February and the salary ban, and included in that was the civil service job description, which had a very specific experience requirement and other elements that counted towards that experience requirement. So the five-year experience was commercial or industrial real estate sales, area of economic development, business development, management, training, training and organizational or financial assistance to newer expanding businesses. I don't, I don't see five years of experience with Ms. Claybrooks. I think generously, there's, you know, 12 months, and then another year could be given for the masters. So, you know, she's three years short, and I don't necessarily have a, you know, a hangup about being the letter of the law here, but I'm kind of wondering, considering she's from Essex, and considering that was giving her a residency waiver, and considering that her resume did not include that she is a county committee person and a city council person, that does concern me a little bit, but I'm curious as to how many resumes we received for this position.
So first of all, let me do explain that I did an extensive advertisement of the position, and so it was advertised within the city itself, it was advertised on the New Jersey League of Municipalities classified, it was advertised in downtown New Jersey in their classifieds for district management corporations. I also advertised in Main Street, New Jersey, and quite frankly, I was very disappointed in the candidates that I received. So as a result of that, I averaged, I sent it to some of my counterparts outside of Plainfield, as well as to developers for candidates. And so when I'm looking at staffing for the Department of Economic Development, I'm looking for balance within my team, not just to the letter of the job description, and so quite frankly, other candidates may have had real estate experience, but hadn't built any relationships with any of the brokers, don't have a track record of delivering on that. So the things that go into consideration was not only her work experience, but her degree in urban planning, and when I look at my staff, I'm also short a planner, and so I'm looking for the person who best complements the Department of Economic Development. And so I believe that Brittany Claybrooks is that candidate. I personally don't think her being a city council person or a district conference leader is that important to the job that I'm asking be done. And I've been doing this for 20 years, and I pretty well know what I need on my team.
If I could just interrupt, how many applications did you get?
Probably, I didn't count them, but at least 25.
And how many did you get from Plainfield?
I didn't count that, I interviewed a total of four people.
Councilman McCray, any questions?
If I could just, as you said, just to clarify the issue, the qualifications of Ms. Claybrooks really aren't for the council's decision seating. The issue is purely, this, how about, Ms. Claybrooks is hired by the administration, so the council doesn't have a role with regard to the hire. Our residency status, residency ordinance provides that any individual who's hired by the city has a year to move into the city unless a waiver is granted. So really, the question before the council seating is not qualifications, but whether or not the, whether or not a waiver is proper, whether or not the administration took the steps necessary to find qualified candidates in the city and was unable to do so. So really, I just want to clarify, the question isn't really whether or not she's better than other candidates, it's whether or not a residency waiver is appropriate.
If I could just interject, the qualifications were statements, and my question was how many applications? The longer answer with all the extraneous information was not what I requested, that was what was provided by Director Jackson. So my question was, because we're doing a residency waiver, I wanted to know how, what the effort was for local residents, what that, what that process was, and how many we got for local residents. So that was my concern, and if we're going to be giving waivers, I'd like to know that we, you know, turned over every stone locally before we did that, and then if not locally, that we turned over every stone in Union County, and then we start going outside. So that was my question. Any additional was, I would be glad to hear that, by Ms. Jackson.
Very short answer.
What was the question? I thought there was an additional question?
That was just a comment. Councilman McCray, any questions? Councilwoman Mills-Ranceford?
It's not really a question, I'd like to make a statement, based on A L for Netherlands. I do chair the Economic Development Subcommittee, and we did meet with the principals of the project, and we were pleased with what they were presenting about complete renovation, community office, emergency system, the fact that they were adding 5% official ADA units and adding 5% hearing and visual units, replacing the HVAC system. We did go further and ask for some information, which was the plan of improvements to the site and the letter of support from residents that live there. We received both, and I think one of the driving points we asked was that we service all of Plainfield, we have a lot of redevelopment happening, but it was something special to have someone come in and want to redevelop an existing structure to make it better for those residents that are there. So we wholeheartedly support it, this particular project.
Thank you. Vice President O'Hara?
Yeah, really just a general comment in regards to A M. I just wanted to say that I did, I do support Ms. Claybrooks. I think, you know, given her background, whether it's Capitol Hill, or her planning, or her masters from NYU and her, I think that she'd be a good candidate, especially under the leadership of Director Jackson, given, and I'm glad to see that their team is growing in economic development, given all the projects that we have going on in the city. No further comments.
Councilman Good?
Just a feedback, which I hate to do, but I was kind of wondering when you were going to make any moves to get some help, because it didn't look like you're kind of doing everything by yourself. So I do support it as well, but I was kind of curious, but for making her so special because of all the other advocates that applied, would make, you know, make her stand out among the rest of them?
I think, again, it was looking at my entire team and seeing that not only could she step into the role in terms of relationship with business owners, but she can do some of the planning activity as well, so I thought that was very important.
So just for the sake, for the sake, the advocates that applied here in our city did not meet that criteria that you were looking for?
No, and I did, like I said, I interviewed four candidates, three of them were City of Plainfield residents. One of the candidates I interviewed, I thought was great, I'd recommended that candidate not for this job, but for somewhere in the administration when an opportunity arises.
Thank you, Director Jackson.
Councilwoman Davis?
Yes, Director Jackson. So going back to A J, talking about, we asked the developers, and we asked them to host job fairs, are those strong suggestions, or what happens if they don't host those job fairs? Is there any recourse for that?
They are very strong suggestions. I haven't ran into a problem where someone has refused to do that. They're interested in getting good candidates, they're also interested in hiring local residents. I mean, that makes it better for them, makes it better for us.
Okay, so for A K, can you just explain for the benefit of the public why R A Bs are important to redevelopment?
So R A Bs allow you to have a degree of more flexibility than you would have under the long-term.
So RABs allow you to have a degree of more flexibility than you would have under the long-term tax exemption. So you could structure it differently. And RABs are not used widely. They're limitedly used. Where I see them used is in the case of hospitals. So that's typically where I see a RAB being used, or a project that is catalytic for the community, meaning that the leadership wants to see that project done. And so that's where I see RABs being used. It gives you much greater flexibility. You're not tied to the rigid percentages you have with a longer tax exemption.
Okay, for AL, we know when we hear pilots, the community gets very antsy, for lack of a better term, when they hear, when they hear or see pilots on the agenda. Can you just kind of explain how this pilot is different from pilots that we give for ready-to-construction and why this pilot is important and how that adds in to the need for the HMFA mortgage?
Right, so this pilot is again about improving the quality of life associated with our affordable housing. And so some of the families are here, some of the tenants are here, really representing that they'd like to see the improvements. But financially, this pilot makes good sense for the City of Plainfield. Under current taxes, the city would collect 12.4 million and get 7 million if we were over 30 years. Under the pilot, the city collects 9.3, but we get, oh God, I didn't put the number in there. So under the pilot, we get, the bulk of that, we get 8.7 million. And so over 30 years, we're going to get 8.7 million versus 7 million. That's kind of the financials associated with it. In addition, we're going to get an upfront payment of $500,000. And so the pilot financially makes good sense for the City of Plainfield, but it also makes good sense for the quality of life for our residents.
So just that quality of life piece, if you can just kind of expand. I know that residents may have concerns, like this is a project that's been around for a while. It has tenants in there, they're paying rent. If you just could just kind of explain why that pilot is necessary for these renovations?
Yeah, so unfortunately, you know, prior, so this is the new purchaser of the property. But under the former ownership, they just didn't reinvest, basically, in upkeep. It's like a house.
Would you like the developer to come up and speak?
Yeah, you want to speak to that?
So we have purchased the property two years ago and there was over 50.
Baby.
Oh, sorry. Unlike Olivia, I'm the developer of Meadowwood. We have purchased the property well over a year ago and there was over 50 violations because the previous owner did not take care of the place or a lot of code violations. We had taken care of all those code violations. And in addition, replaced all the electrical panels because it was a danger of the site. Unfortunately, the residents have been very patient with us. It's a subsidized property. It's HUD financed. And it has a ton of deferred maintenance. We want to take advantage of using the state agency to provide financing because it's not a market rate project. Since the project's subsidized, there's only a certain amount of cash flow to service debt. And the state agency in turn provides credits because it's a low-income housing project and residents deserve to live quality. That's the nature of our development firm. You know, we provide market rate housing for low-income families and it needs quite a bit of work. So we were going to do kitchens, we were going to do facade, we were going to upgrade appliances, basically put in community room, paving. They get more marketable than it is. It's got a lot of deferred maintenance and we plan to take care of that.
Thank you. So I just thought it was important, thank you for coming up. I just thought it was important that we just allow the public to see and know that we are not only investing in luxury housing, but we're also making sure that the quality of our affordable housing units are up to par because everybody deserves somewhere that is safe and comfortable to live, no matter how much they can and cannot afford. So for my last question, for AJ, it's in the resolution or in the study, it says that most of the properties are occupied or operating, but a number of them are non-conforming. So are we looking at this in a non-comination area or are we looking at this in a combination area? What's the scope that we're looking at for this?
Yeah, so we're, we're really essentially talking about from Woodland to Leland, I think that's the boundaries.
Yes.
And it's a non-comination area. We get displaced about a number of the properties in that area all the time. And so this is an opportunity to go in and see if it really is in need of redevelopment. And so that's what we're going, asking the planning board to do in this particular case.
So when I was looking at the area, are we including that apartment building across from Meadowwood train station in this area? Or, oh yes?
I'll set that one, yes.
Okay, and so it's that side of the street from Woodland to Leland? And then on the other side of the street, is it Leland to the train station? Or I'm just trying to figure out where it is because I looked at the map, but that didn't move.
Yeah, the map, I was looking, trying to get to the map. So on the other side, it is from Woodland to about, oh God, Woodland, it's between Woodland and Central Avenue.
Where Public Works is from Nassau under Street or the opposite?
It's on the side where Public Works.
Central Street.
Central Street, I'm sorry, Central Avenue. But yes, it's on the side with Public Works.
So Public Works is within that area as well?
No, we did, we discussed, I know Bill and I discussed Public Works. We may have put it in there.
Okay.
Okay.
I just have a question about, just generally regarding the Plainfield bill. Along with my colleagues, you know, we all talk, we have a vested interest in seeing that developers do hire and employ Plainfield residents for the projects. With over a billion dollars in, in development going on in the town, we know that there's opportunity there to, to help out our residents as well. So Plainfield bill is a program that, you know, that helps out with that. So can you just describe that program a little bit more? Let us know how long the program lasts, whether a new class of that program will be starting and whether that's a program we can continue to support on a recurring basis?
I'm going to ask my partner in crime over there, Director Brown.
So AJ Bill is a partnership with the Elizabeth Development Corporation, where we work to get local Plainfielders into apprenticeship programs. And those apprenticeship programs are not just construction and physical work, but it's also electrician, it's all those different types of tasks that goes down into construction. This is, I want to say, our third time that we're hosting it. The last time was exclusively for women of color and before that, it was open to all of the city. This one that we're hosting, I believe it's March 11th, I just have to double check. It is open to all city and we hope that people will come. It is a process where they come in, they learn our program, they actually take a test, a brief test, not, not very complicated. If they need help when they take that test, we, we can find help as well. It is also open to people who were previously incarcerated, depending on what they were incarcerated for. And so we, that's one of the highlights of the program for me, is that we get to help all people and with all kinds of opportunities. So I believe it's March 11th, but I will have to.
Okay, please, have that for the next meeting, so we can make that announcement.
Absolutely.
For, for the sake of our residents.
Sure.
Okay. Counselor President, just a quick clarification. Could Director Jackson clarify that study area? Because based on the information that we were sent, it, it doesn't show that it goes to such a street.
It doesn't? I have them, okay, so it's, the map should, there, I, I have attached to mine two maps. Do you have two or one attached, Counselor?
I have two, so I have one, one shows from
Leland.
The south side of, of South Avenue from Woodland up to the
Belvedere.
About Sixth Street, where, where it turned and go north. So a pretty, there's a number of lots, there are weird little lots over there. There's a number of lots between there and Central Street. And then it shows the south side of South Avenue from Belvedere, which is essentially the Delta, Old Delta Gas Station, all the way to Leland, which is the 711. And then it shows the north side of South Avenue from Leland, essentially the long grates
Right to the middle.
Up to the train station.
Yeah, that is the area.
Okay, based on the map.
That is the area.
It, it only takes up about half of the block. It doesn't extend all the way to Central.
Right.
Correct, stops at the, I think that college?
Yeah, stops right midway in the, between the two streets.
I just.
Okay.
Do we have consensus to add these items to the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any opposition, extensions? Okay, added to the agenda. All right, with the Department of Health and Social Services, please present their items.
Agreed, Counselor. The Department of Health and Social Services presents items AP through AR.
Any questions?
Any questions, I'm sorry.
Not so many. Counselor McCray?
Yes, so for Resolution AP, are you asking for the council to take action? Or is it just more of a, like a serendipity, like informal type resolution? Can you just kind of explain?
Yeah, I'm asking council, council to recognize the fact that there is this dramatic change to a act that has worked to prevent redlining in communities of color. Further, we are asking, well, approved by the council, the councils would ask, would ask the clerk to send it on to the county man, as well as the President of the United States. So really, it's about recognition and letting people know that this is a challenge for communities and that it should, while we recognize and we support any attempt to modernize, what they call modernization is probably not, will have a deep impact on communities of color.
Director Brown, I really appreciate the resolutions that you've been putting forth in the social impact and recognizing some of the challenges that our communities face, including the human trafficking resolution, as well as this resolution to address redlining. I think it shows that this administration not only cares about the development and the growth of the city, but the impact of residents here, at least from, from the very least, the Department of Health and Social Services. March, you want to recognize National Nutrition Month. And I know we go through this every month and you say we're going to put things up on social media, but are we going to go further? Because I know at one point, we did have like a nutritionist as a consultant or on staff or something like that. Are we going to do a little bit more, especially since we do have WIC available? And that would be a good place to start making sure that we have healthy meals at our, with our youngest residents?
So, so we do have a public education component as part of the Health Division. And they do work with WIC and they work with public schools, especially around health and nutrition. So that is ongoing. We customarily do recognition events simply to let the public know what's going on through social media. We, every now and again, will have an event where we will bring people together. This one, we don't. This is simply recognition and reaching out, using our health educator to work with certified individuals.
Thank you.
Counselor McRae?
No questions, Counselor.
Vice President O'Hara?
No questions.
Counselor Melzner, answer? Counselor McCray?
No.
Counselor McCaffrey?
Kind of a general one related to AQ. Are we, last year, the council received a, from, really, I think every department, kind of a state of the, state of the union and what the, the goals were for the new year. Are we going to be getting a presentation that includes the status of the abandoned properties?
Yes.
Any idea on that? Last year, I think they were in March and April, but.
It's on, no, that was the budget.
No, you guys did presentations here to the council. There was a marketing presentation. You did them all in one, but then marketing had to get moved because there was an IT problem. So you had to do it at the next.
I don't recall that.
I'll find the date.
Okay.
Do we have consensus to add these items to the agenda?
Yes.
Any opposition, extensions? Okay, this will be added to the agenda. Okay, introduction of ordinance on first reading. First, remember this?
The administration will have the notice.
Okay, administration? Can you present the items, introduction of items in first reading? NC 2020.
Oh, there are four items presented, NC 9 through 11 and bond ordinance 1 through 71. Are there any questions from the council?
Counselor McCaffrey?
Yes, MC 2020 dash 09. So this, I'm familiar with this redevelopment plan because I was on the planning board when we approved the original one and when we did the first amendment, now it's getting its second amendment. And I'm noticing, you know, one, we're increasing the density in this area by 43%. So we're going from 70 to 100 units per acre.
Yes.
That's a pretty significant percentage increase in this development area. And the other thing, you know, more of a comment is with all of these redevelopment plans, we're really inconsistent with some of our, what would be master plan elements. You know, we're, we are using phrasing in this redevelopment amendment that roof decks, roof gardens, or green roofs shall be provided. But in, on the North Avenue project, we have them and we give into the developer to remove them. And then in the TOD West, which TODD West, amended redevelopment plan, we have, you know, if you'd like to, we'd really like you to put a roof deck in. And if you do, then we'd like it to be this big, but you don't have to. So, you know, at some point, and maybe it'll come out in the, the master plan revision or update, but we really need to have some consistency around what we're requesting these developers to do. We tend to kind of just adjust it for different areas of the city.
Yeah, so we have, within internally, we have much discussion about what is open space? How does open space get provided? We will have some guidelines in the master plan. Really, space on public property is recreational space. So the question becomes how much recreational space get put on to private property? We, as a municipal entity, provide open space. So we're having those kind of debates. It will be, get settled in the master plan in terms of what our goals are related to that. And so you will see some of that change as we are doing these plans. A rooftop restaurant, you know, a rooftop space generally is not, in a private development, is not open to the public. So if there is barbecue and all of that, only on special occasions is that open to the public?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not talking about public open space. I'm talking about developmental open space.
Right.
You know, we, the city provides recreational space, right? And then these developments provide open space?
No, the city provides open space.
And recreational space.
And recreational space.
And these developments have to, they have bulk standards that require open space.
Well, that's a question, is how do you define open space? And so open space is typically for the public. And so what we are talking about is specific amenity space to the development. And those are the definitions that we're arguing about internally as it relates to planning. So that.
Those are pretty clearly defined when we put it in bulk standards for developments that open spaces related to the development and for residents of the development.
And for the residents of the development. Actually, this is one of the few towns where I see that as a requirement, open space within the development. It really is what kind of amenities are going to be in that development? Are you going to have a dog park? Are you going to have a pool? Are you going to have barbecue, meeting rooms, theater rooms? You know, all of those are amenities to that particular development and typically are just not open to the public. So, we're, we're clarifying our language as we look at these redevelopment plans. I agree with you, they need to be consistent, particularly around transit oriented development. Those need to be consistent. And we are getting there in terms of density and what we're requiring for those particular plans. I think on TODN, what we're changing, you're absolutely correct. We're increasing the density. We're not increasing the number of stories of the building or the height, but we are increasing the density. We are permitting, in terms of recommendation, some other first floor uses other than just retail. It could include co-working space.
All right, Councilwoman McCracken, questions?
I actually have. Are we, are we just doing the one or are we doing all four?
Which one are you doing?
The questions on MC 2020 dash 10, which is the TODD West redevelopment plan.
Right.
Which is the downtown. You know, we, we, this, this is a, you know, I'm familiar with this redevelopment plan as well because I was on the planning board when it was originally approved. And there's some, there's some confusion in here, or it's just me. We, first of all, we are allowing them to count on street parking towards their parking requirements. So, I would just like a little bit of a definition of how you count on, what, what on-street parking counts? This, the frontage only on-street parking or within three-block radius? What counts first?
Can you point to, let me see what section?
Ah, here, I'll see if I can. It is TODD West, page 23. And it is the, let me see. I'm sorry. Yeah, C. On-street parking may be counted towards the parking requirement for ground floor, non-residential uses, except for the parking required for a restaurant. So, I get what that sentence means, no residential parking and no restaurant parking. But for a retail space, how, how exactly do we, what is the formula for counting on-street parking with, what, what spots?
The re, for retail space, this plan says that we, we're requiring one space for 500 square feet of retail.
No, no, because I want to get to that too. I really am more focused on how do you count, what on-street parking would be counted? Is it, is it the frontage for this development? Is it Madison, the street parking on the front, the street parking on Second? That would then count towards the retailers? Is it just that nearest to retail?
It would be all of the on-street parking would count toward retail.
So, it wouldn't be reserved or anything? It would just be that, that's available parking in the vicinity?
Available, yes.
Okay, then my other question is, we've got some confusion here and it spills over when you get into the, to the financial, the agreement, development agreement. So, on page, on page 21. Sorry. Yeah, so, page 21, residential use, it has a letter C. One and two-bedroom units shall provide a parking ratio of one space for every unit. Studios shall provide a parking ratio of one space for every two units. Now, that's, doesn't seem to matter because it doesn't appear that they're doing any studios. So, it says right there, one unit per, one parking space per unit. If you go to the next page, page 22, under parking, letter A, the parking, and this is what's been amended. The parking requirement for residential use shall be 0.8 spaces for each dwelling. So, that's a 20% reduction within a page. So, which one do they follow? And then, we, there is a clause in here that says that the planning board can then approve an additional 15% reduction in parking.
Yeah, so, the one that applies is the 0.8. And we, you were speaking of consistency. And so, we want to make it consistent with TODD South. In terms of, we will make the corrections as it relates to the one-on-one. It looks like when he amended it, he didn't catch that.
But I'll go on the record as a council member, like I did on the planning board. This is typical admission and these are legal binding documents that really they need to do a better job of, of editing their work. So, so what we're saying is that we're doing 0.8 spaces.
For you.
And that, that takes me to the, the agreement, which is the TODD West Urban renewal LLC tax exemption, MC 2011. Their, their, their parking is way up there. I mean, I was trying to do the math and it's, you know, they're, they're required to have 524 parking spaces. And they have, they count a 15% reduction. So, that's, they're assuming they're going to get a planning board reduction of 15%. So, that takes them to 446 spaces. Then they talk about a 20% reduction. So, they did the math on the one, one, the one-to-one ratio. Then they did the math for 15% reduction. Then they take another 20% off. And they still provide 170 spots when they're required 400 and some change. So, then they put in a factor of, we're going to have an agreement with the Union County Parking Deck, which, by the way, we don't even know what the vacancy is there. The county has never given an agreement for us to utilize that. And we've, in a private, in a previous council meeting, that was going to be used as parking because of the pedestrian law. So, we're double counting and we don't even understand our vacancy and our parking availability. And we've got a developer that is grossly missing his parking requirement.
So, right, so, right now, in terms of the parking requirement, what this is, is the financial agreement before you. In terms of the parking requirement, there are discussions currently and have been for the past year with the Union County Improvement Authority about a shared parking arrangement specifically to this project. We've also sent them over a formal request to that effect. They are currently doing their own parking study. And it is being funded by the developer to do their own parking study to determine their capacity to provide additional parking. So, that is all underway. This really is the financial agreement as it relates to meeting the parking requirement. They will be, like any other developer, they're going to go before the planning board and they're going to have to meet the parking requirement, whatever that is. So, largely, this is the financial agreement. I'd like us to really focus on the terms, the business terms associated with the agreement. And as it relates to parking, like any other site plan, they have to go before the board and get, meet the parking requirements. Now, again, at the same time, we are trying to approve this. They are trying to get approval from Union County Improvement Authority for shared parking, to meet the parking requirement.
And when, obviously, there's a, there's a plan, a site plan waiting to, to be presented. What's, I, I feel like we have all of these projects approving this pedestrian mall at, at large taxpayer expense, whether it's through pilot agreements or through direct spending. And you have parking issues, yet our parking solutions are, are trailing, are developing dramatically. So, you know, I'm looking at this, by the way, I'm looking at this application agreement where they're using a 20% reduction and then the optional 15% reduction in parking requirement. Their application was, was revised dated 12/31/19. So, they were using math that the planning board hadn't even approved until February 20. So, obviously, there's, there's conversations about the 20% reduction that would be edited into this redevelopment agreement. And, and I'm not so sure 0.8 is, is a bad number. I'm not arguing that. What I'm arguing is, you know, we've got carts, parallel parked and double parked all over town, and the horses are running wild. I, I think, I think we've got to get a better understanding of what our parking vacancy and, and, and capacity is and what our plan is before we start doing pedestrian malls and building tall stories.
I understand your position on the pedestrian mall. I will say that we are not planning to use the county parking lot for the pedestrian mall. I personally have never made that statement. And we are not planning to do that. We have always looked at that parking deck as an opportunity to provide parking for developments. And I would say that this is probably the largest project that Plainfield has seen. It's over $113 million. It's catalytic, it's transformative for the city of Plainfield. And we have had discussions with Union County even to build on top of their parking deck, if necessary. And it is grossly underutilized any given point in time of the day. And I don't share the opinion that there is a parking problem here.
Your councilman, councilman McCracken, any questions?
Yeah, we're just going to say that all of these projects have been vetted extensively by the planning board, who are volunteers, who give tirelessly of their time and painstakingly go through hours of review of these projects and have come out unanimously voting in favor of these projects, which goes to the fact that even the Nishwan Group has been commended for the great work they're doing. And if we take a look, the Nishwan Group is also the planning group for the city of Westfield, which we always point to, along with getting accolades for the work that they've done up in Patterson recently as making that a transformative environment up there. So, when we take a look at these plans here, we should always keep in mind that the planning board with its professionals and with its members have vetted these projects and have voted humanously to approve them and have approved those projects.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mills-Ransum? Vice President of the Senate, any questions? Councilman Good?
No questions.
Councilwoman Davis?
Yes, Director Jackson, just for clarification. We're amending the TOD South, the TODN South Avenue redevelopment plan, and yes. But then we're also looking at other sites in that area. Are those overlapping or are those two separate? Because it looks like in that plan, some of that area is within there. Can you just kind of?
Yeah, the area that we're looking at is currently not within that plan. But we've been, after we studied the area and we said, okay, these properties meet the criteria for redevelopment, then we may come back to you and say, let's amend TODN South redevelopment plan to now include these properties. But what's important to note here is that these properties that we're looking at, even though they're adjacent and near TODN South, is we never did a study on those properties. And the first step is to do the study. And so, we may come back to you later and say, the planning board has looked at it. These properties meet the criteria. We need to really amend the TODN South to include those new properties.
Okay, also for MC 2020 dash 11, I see that a number of city properties are within that, including a few parking lots. Is the city selling that to the developer or how exactly is that working?
Yeah, so, part of what we will present to you at the next meeting is a redevelopment and purchase and sell agreement for the city's parking lot. That will be presented to you at the next meeting. This is the first reading of the financial agreement. And so, at the same time that we're asking you to do the second reading, we will be presenting the redevelopment agreement and the purchase-sell agreement. And the reason that we didn't present it this time is we're still doing, disagreeing, or trying to come to agreement over certain elements.
We're probably looking to get the best bang for our buck for these city-owned properties, including these parking lots.
Yes, and we, we do, we look at the whole pro forma, yes. The answer is yes. We know the value of our properties.
Awesome, we are selling parking lots to the developer. And you know, parking in just that area and the entire first ward is definitely a concern of mine. So, have we addressed what would happen once we sell these parking lots? So, I know one of those parking lots is heavily used on Saturdays by the Seventh Day Vintage Church. Have we been to talk to them, been to talk to them about what's to come in that area? I know by the park, there's no parking on Second Street. So, have we thought about all of these things and what we can do to remedy, remedy some of those problems that we may be facing?
So, the answer is yes. Part of the master plan process is that we have Timothy Haas, which is one of the contractors associated with the master plan, which is a parking expert, you know, in terms of New Brunswick parking. Jim Zullo is the consultant. He's looking at parking now. We will be asking him to look at specific parking lots as we develop RFPs for those. So, then we get the parking number right. Remember, structured parking is something that we like to see, but structured parking is expensive. So, we got to make sure that we get the, the right number. And so, that's what we're trying to do. That's why we're trying to better utilize the county's parking deck because that, you know, they're probably still covering the cost of building that parking deck.
Also, we talked about increasing density in these projects. And I asked you for, do we know what are the holes when we talk about increasing density? So, is there a hole in mind that we want to increase it to X amount of units based off of what we have now, what we want to see? Have we considered what increased density looks like in terms of, what it looks like in terms of people? Right, so, we might say we want 100 extra units. But what does that realistically look like in terms of people? Is that something that we can answer now? Or we're going to wait until the census is completed? How are we really going to decide? Will we hit that increased density? Yes.
So, again, the experts base number of people on number of bedrooms. And particularly in transit oriented developments. And those numbers have held pretty true. So, we can come up with estimates based on the number of units, like how many studios, how many one-bedrooms, and how many two-bedrooms. For the most part, we are not building three bedrooms. In some projects, we are building three bedrooms, like Station at Grant, that's a requirement of the HMFA funding. So, we know based on those numbers, how many children, we can estimate how many children will be in a building or a property. Thank you.
Do we have consensus to add these items to the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, extensions? These items will be added to the agenda. All right, citizens are welcome to address the council or any government. I have enough concern to them, whether how to schedule on the agenda above. During this portion of the agenda, a total of 60 minutes has been allocated for all public comments to be presented. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name, address to the clerk for the record. We're not discussing on any subject, as well as any time the city speaker is allowed. There'll be five minutes. Large groups are urged to select someone to represent them for his staff. What's that?
Cherryville, 1060 Central Avenue.
And we are.
Thank you. You can talk about a couple of things. Cherryville, 1060 Central, Plainfield. In this number one of the county, what you're talking about. If you look at the original agreement, the citizens were supposed to have that use on the weekends and nights. Half the time, the police and shared cars are parked in parking spots that citizens should be parked in. Also, the clock is supposed to be moved across the street to protect it. None of that's been done. We ask for it and ask for it and ask for it. We just get little ringtones like he's doing now from our freestanders, which we have two of them, they're Plainfielders. So, it's like you're talking to a wall trying to open it up for shoppers, especially on the weekend. I challenge any of you to drive around Plainfield at night. You can tell where things are overcrowded. I know because of what my job is. I know where the crowd is. I know where illegal housing is going on. And I happen to know that 0.8 parking spots is not going to get it. When I interview people in apartments, one of the complaints is there's not enough parking and they don't feel safe. Today, I drove around for 20 minutes trying to get a parking spot to go to the new coffee shop that opened up, and there were none. I also happened to meet a couple of employees that work downtown Plainfield above the Plandia Ardenal office and in a medical. Iron Hill office, in a medical building there. And they were told the only parking permits that were available were closed or behind Supreme House, that they couldn't get it. The hours available are from eight to ten and two to four, I believe, to get a parking permit, you have to take that money order. And every time they ask for a parking spot at Lot Six, they're told there are none. There are business owners who have employees that are told they cannot get parking permits in that lot. They also took away the handicap spots. And when you get ready to put money in the machine, you can't even read the, the numbers, all the numbers have wore off up there. So what a lot of people are asking now is if they have a business, why can't they either A, go online, pay with a credit card, or pay for a whole year for a lot? Why is that becoming like a lottery? You know, pay two months in advance so you can get a spot. She asked, can I pay two months in advance to get a spot so I don't have to walk? I'm afraid to walk in the dark, all behind me, so she's asking somebody to take her for a rental, because that's the only place she could get a parking spot. On the, you go down South Avenue at night, you go down Randolph Road, you go down Second Street, there's people parking on the street. You're trying to turn this place into Jersey City. And what disturbs me even more is all the developers and all the employees are making decisions about people who live here, don't live here. So you're not gonna live here and have to try to drive down the street and can't get through because there's parking. I mean, even when I interviewed somebody on South Avenue, they're, they're upset that they were not told by the planning board that they were gonna have amenities they had to pay for. Sixteen hundred for an apartment, forty bucks for a closet, forty bucks for the amenities, fifty bucks to park, and a hundred dollars for a garage. Who's gonna pay two thousand dollars for a one-bedroom apartment in Plainfield? Developers wanna come here and they make everything slim and glamorous like they did with the apartments above the senior building, they were supposed to be a glamorous parking, green deck, barbecue, dance, party up there, it's not there, it's still not there. You know, the same thing behind Tepper's, it's a mess behind Tepper's, the developers and done that. A lot of, a lot of developers tell you stories and they don't follow through. And, and that upsets me greatly. I don't hear anybody talking about building a parking garage first, then letting somebody build apartments. Everybody wants to use Lot Six or Lot Eight, look at the glamorous parking spots, look how many. Kids are not, kids, people under thirty, between twenty, they're not gonna give up their car. I'm sorry, they're not. I interviewed a lot of them, they, they say they may park it, and they may ride the train to work, but not everybody that lives here in Plainfield takes a turn to Manhattan. They still wanna drive, you know, so they say maybe they'll have one car a year, not everybody's gonna take a bike, you know, and now you don't even have the lawn bikes around town anymore. So you have a big, big, big homeless problem, you have people sleeping in the streets, you have people urinating in the train station stand, and they have, Plainfield doesn't address that, you know, so you haven't addressed senior housing. We talk about building apartments for people committing to New York, they're trying to make this a whole ball in our Jersey City, but I haven't heard any developer talk about building housing for seniors. And this senior building that you have on Front Street now, you took away their parking to put the Section Eight, and you promised them that they'd be able to park. And the seniors that are seventy and eighty years old now have to walk out at night on the street because they can't get into the bad lot to park, because there's not quote-unquote "not enough parking." So even though you see empty spots, the manager tells you there's not enough parking. Why is it that a senior citizen, when that building was built, was promised to have one parking spot per unit, and now they don't get it? So is that what's gonna happen to the other future apartment buildings, or they gotta start charging more for parking so people are gonna park on the street? They don't tell you that now. You're trying to make all your little fancy plans, you know, the developer may say, want to have one parking spot, but you know, six months after you closes, he might start charging people a hundred dollars and they end up parking on the street.
Thank you.
Mary Brawickel, seventeen eighty bucks, leaving Halloween. I just wanna make my last bunch of pitches on pedestrian mall, which I know you already approved, however. Last Saturday and Sunday, February twenty-second and twenty-third, I'm a board member of the Plainfield Symphony, and we had an event at the Quaker Meeting House, which deadends right into that North Avenue place. And on Saturday night at seven-thirty, my husband and I drove down North Avenue, and every parking spot was taken, and there were people double parking, and there were people waiting for people to come out. Sunday, it was, it was exactly the same. Sunday afternoon, every parking spot on North Avenue was, was full. As a taxpayer in town, I think that we have not been given adequate disclosure about how the people who are tenants on North Avenue and the regular citizens and people wanna shop on North Avenue are going to be accommodated when we can't take a car there. Where are all those cars gonna go? As a taxpayer, I, I am still concerned personally with that. Our city departments, without a whole bunch more people, are gonna be able to maintain that without sucking resources from other places in the city. And as a taxpayer, I don't understand with all this fabulous development going on, why we're borrowing money taxpayers have to pay back, instead of having developers make contributions toward public improvements and having them pay for it. I, I, I just, this, for some reason, this is getting rushed through way before it really needed to get rushed through. I don't know why, I'm not gonna, I'm not, maybe I do know why, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna speculate, but it's, I hope this works out, because I'm a thirty-eight year resident of Plainfield, I never want anything in Plainfield to fail, but I'm telling all of you elected officials who put this through, if this doesn't work out, believe me, it's gonna be on your next election report card the next time we try to run for public office. Thank you.
I'm Garrett Schneider, I live at eight-two-five Call, New Haven, and been a resident since two thousand and two. I've been involved in real estate in many different classes over my years, I'm over fifteen, and I always look around the country where I travel to see what's going on. This explosion of development going all over this country, it's immense. My family's down in Charleston, there's many developing communities down there. When a developer came in, part of their master plan was, what are they gonna do for the community? They built high schools, elementaries in the very beginning when they did the development of it. They brought in hospitals and gave them land so they could handle all the development and the people that's in there. I'm a person that looks for solutions before the problems. I try to anticipate the problems going on. What I see, and what I hear from everybody here, is a parking situation which anybody that lives here knows is a problem. If you're estimating somewhere around four thousand cars, four thousand people to be in development in this area, plus, I get about four thousand cars. Whether you put it in .8, .2, you gotta have reality of four thousand cars that's gonna be in this area. That also, when you look at that amount of four thousand units and four thousand cars, and then do an average of two thousand people for each unit being low, you got eight thousand plus people that's gonna be part of this community. Add in the fact that you gotta have some children, that's gonna be one in those families, all right, maybe one or two units, you gotta have a kid. Where we gonna put the kids in the schools? It's this, literally, we're hurting for schools right now. Again, I've looked for solutions, I haven't seen it, and I'm a real optimistic guy, but I haven't heard anything from anybody about the school system. Major improvement, major, nothing. And now schools are falling apart now. Add, I'll be low, add three thousand kids to the schools. It's a low bar. How many? If you want. I'll be conservative, add three thousand to the school system. Look at doubling the amount of kids that's coming to the community. We have, I self, oh, Plainfield is number one worst school in the area. Well, I'm none, okay? You talk about Westfield and following Westfield and what goes on in Westfield, Westfield is Westfield because of the school systems. Look at Westfield's parking, what's going on there, they're controlling it. Look at the areas up in Garwood, okay, that they're building the new complex up there. That parking lot went up first. When they broke ground, that parking lot started to go up. It is complete, before they even have any more townhouses or apartments in there. It's incomplete. That's proactive thinking. And, and I've seen this, been through it, with planning and everything, I've seen it before. Other point, now you got whatever amount of people, four thousand, eight thousand people, that you gotta be the town owner, all right, what are you gonna do for entertainment? What's gonna go on? I've been around long enough that I remember Macy's and everything else, where everybody from Newark down traveled to Plainfield to do their shopping, everybody, okay? You gotta have eight thousand people that wanna do something. You wanna keep the money in the community, what, what you gotta do to keep them there? Otherwise, they're gonna go Westfield, they're gonna go on Route Twenty-two, they're gonna go up to Sunday. What are you gonna do for entertainment on that? So when you think about building, okay, you throw up just units upon units with no retail underneath it, or for some kind of handling those people, what are you gonna do about it? Take a leave. All the apartments, I get most of my customers from Jersey City and Hoboken, because they wanna move out. The last point I wanna make is, is about the historical districts, and I'm on the historical board, and I love it. I didn't like it in the beginning, I thought it was controlling, but I understand the control that any needs for, and I really love it. All the developing sections that you're talking about, the development, it's nothing to do with historical districts. Historical districts want something to do in your own town. They love their town. I haven't met anybody about it.
Councilor Parzai, speak the time, sir.
It is, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening. Sam Sakeeta Cooper, nine and zero club over at Plainfield. Just wanted to make a couple of points. As a business owner in town, as a resident in town, I really need you to think about that pedestrian mall just a little bit more. I'm not against the development of it. I am against the fact that parking will be taken away as we have it today. There was a parking and traffic study that was done, which has already reduced the parking in front of the post office and the fish market on Second Street. And if you're going to reduce the parking on North Avenue, that means that you're gonna have an overflow of people trying to park on Watchon Avenue. That particular post office is the main post office for the city. For those of you that don't know, the other post offices do not open at eight or even nine. The majority of them open at either ten, some open at eleven, and they close at two or three. So having that be a nuisance to try to get parking to get to that post office is something that you really should consider. I'm not even talking about people that may have disabilities, I'm just talking about common folk that may be able to jump in and out of their car really quickly. What about the senior citizens or other individuals that may need to get there and can't walk as far? So that's something that you really need to consider with this pedestrian mall. Again, I'm not against it, I just need, there's some things that need to be thought out, we maybe need to research some things. Parking really is horrific in that area already. I saw a pothole filler today on North Avenue, was blocking me, so of course I had no choice but to wait for it to leave, and I was very surprised and happy that we had a pothole filler. However, I'm even further surprised the fact that there's so many damaged roads, South Avenue, West Third Street, Grant Avenue, that need services, I'm just wondering what's the schedule? You know, who is governing that, who's looking over it? Is there a place for us to call and report something so that we can have that pothole filler come and service that area? This is for Director West, wanted to know about the foreclosure process regarding the taxes. I'm curious to know what method is being used other than mail to notify the residents about the tax foreclosure, meaning help, assistance, are there seminars, are there sessions, are there, is there a hotline? What is being done so that people don't fall into foreclosure, basically just because of taxes? I'm sure a lot of those people that are being foreclosed on because of taxes only, some of them are probably senior citizens that have been in their homes for years, and maybe they were, you know, unaware, maybe that person doesn't even live at the property anymore, maybe they're in housing. So I'm just wondering what the process is with that. You all should know, and if you don't know, I'm a multiple property owner and taxpayer here in the city of Plainfield. And I want us to do better. The gentleman was talking about the schools, you know, I'm a PTO president as well, I advocate for the city, I advocate for the parents, the children, administrators. When the city fails residents, that directly affects the school system, and I have said that multiple times. So I'm all for positivity, I'm all for the development, I just think there are some things that we need to fine tune a little bit so that we can all benefit from the beautiful city that is Plainfield. I wanted this for Director Brown, wanted to know what is the age minimum for the New Jersey build? And where I can get that information so that I can share that on social media, on my own pages? I also wanted to know what is the procedure for noticing a household for an unlicensed animal? What steps are taken to capture a name for the violation notice? I was also curious to know, when I was here, maybe a month or so ago, when Ms. Jackson presented the slideshow of the pedestrian mall and what it may look like, there was discussion about the parking study. I'm curious to know what was the outcome? I know we had spoken about it, we were gonna hire someone to find out how many parking spots there were. I just, again, want you guys to think about that. Parking is truly at a premium downtown. I kinda park at my own risk sometimes when I do have to run into, to the post office, because there's like four parking spots right there. And then maybe in front of Pete's, there's maybe two and a half, three, which is further down, and I understand that's because of traffic flow, not complaining about that, I'm simply saying to you, to please consider and reconsider the pedestrian mall and think about the businesses that are already there. Pete's, you've got, there's a Chinese place, I think Bowery's is there, just think about public businesses that are gonna be affected. That's it? Thank you.
Hi, my name is David Buckman, I live at one-one-two-seven Watchon Avenue, you hear me? I'm new in town, I moved to Plainfield because I really love the history, love the architecture, I'm an architect. I love the diversity, I love the, the potential of this town very much. I actually am working on some projects in town too, and I really look forward to helping the community and, and being a part of developing this area. And I will say, I agree with everything with parking. And I, as an owner and business owner and resident now, and also property owner, parking is hugely important. In fact, you mentioned Westfield, I lived in Westfield. They failed immensely, don't copy Westfield when it comes to parking, please. They had a nice, beautiful deck designed and already, and the residents voted it down because they didn't want change, now they're living with it. And, and a lot of stores, I mean, it's a great town, yes, and the school system is what got us there, but when you really, look, it's not, it's Cranford, they're in Cranford's dust, they're in Garwood's dust. Why? Because as Gary said, they have parking, and they put the parking up first, and then the stores, and then the apartments. And I hope we do that, I really hope we do that, because this pedestrian mall, I am very psyched for it, it's gotta be done right, it really is. I have a few questions. I'm wondering what the anticipated process is for, for the A-N study that was just, just approved to start? Any anticipated schedule or process with that?
So this is an impression and answer session?
Oh, okay, all right.
We'll give you an opportunity after the meeting, to speak to the right side of that.
I am wondering that. I'm also wondering how it might affect current property owners there, and might it affect approved projects in that area? We can talk about it sometime soon, we'll get that there. Long-term planning, I think Gary touched on that, and I'll, and I'll take a train for that. You gotta think future and where everything we're doing now leads, leads to. And it's not just developers, they're not all greedy, and they're not, look, if they don't have enough parking, they're not gonna rent out their apartments, so they're gonna lose. And I tell my clients all the time, yeah, the city might give you twenty when I knew you need thirty, what good is that? Don't do it, because then you're not, you can only, you're gonna get thirty, thirty apartments built and paid for, and you're only gonna rent out twenty, and you're gonna lose. So it's, it's, everyone's in this together, including developers, and let's do a great job. Thanks.
Thank you.
Johnny Pritchard, Broadway seven-two-three, Arlington, out of Plainfield, now four-one-zero-three south of Garwood. Two things I'd like to address the council about. We have sons and daughters who are wearing our country's uniform, defending our freedom as we speak, beneath the fact that- We need to back them up in every way. We failed to do so during the war in Vietnam. Plainfield lost sixteen of its sons during the war. Those who came back, they were called Nazis, murderers, baby killers. I like that word, Nazi, to be retired once and for all. It's just as bad as other than word, which of course I will not use. The brave soldier in air despise, no town has a stranger. Remember he's his country's stay and day and our danger. Secondly and lastly, we need to reactivate Millerburg and we need to activate that hospital as soon as possible. We need that hospital, we need it badly, and we need it ASAP. If an attack occurs, we will need that hospital, many others, very, very badly. I'm not talking about head colds or ear aches, I'm talking about people's lives. To soon reactivate Millerburg, the better off we always be. Don't let this appear.
Yes.
Yes, Joe.
Let me answer to you, I love it to you, number eleven. It seems like parking and traffic is the issue for a year. This lady brought up about the main post office, it's always been a problem down there, and when you put the pedestrian mall in, I, I fear that the poor tractor trailer driver that has to come in there a couple times a day, he has a hard time now stopping all the traffic on that street in order to back that truck up into that post office. It's just the way it was done. And I know, because I used to work at that post office, and I know that I made a decision a long time ago to go to the other branches around because I could find parking at the other branches where I couldn't find parking down there. So you're gonna put the pedestrian mall there and it's really gonna be a disaster. Parking also is not just a problem in downtown Plainfield, it's the parking all over the city. And traffic is also a problem all over the city. How many times do I have to stop when I'm going down a street that's fairly wide, cars parked on both sides of the street, but yet I have to stop in order to let the car come in front, toward me to pass? And they do the same thing. If we didn't have courteous drivers in this town, nobody would be able to get out on, from Park Drive onto West End Avenue when the soccer players are playing. And even tonight, coming here, I have to do that. When I was a little girl, my father taught us how to avoid, when downtown was really active, which it is now, how to avoid going through downtown. We go through North Plainfield. I go through North Plainfield all the time to get around downtown Plainfield. I even go through North Plainfield sometimes to get to the Drake House because it's easier for me to go down Front Street. And you're putting all the traffic in North Plainfield, and now that you put the stop sign down there at Rock Avenue, I haven't been down in that corner forever because the traffic just backs up. It backs up on West End Avenue, it backs up on Rock Avenue because of the way the traffic patterns are. So most of us living in the west end of town, we avoid Rock Avenue, now that we go through Clitten Avenue in North Plainfield. So you're dumping all the traffic and all the cars on another town. So I'm just saying, I'm grateful to a lot of the drivers in this town that are sometimes courteous. I don't like going when they wake me on because they're taking the law into their own hands and they're taking traffic into their own hands, but it really is a problem, I think you should do a major traffic studies throughout the town. Thank you very much.
Timothy Priano, just a suggestion to the council that has probably shut. Can we get something out for March seventeenth so that we can notify every single resident in this town that has been on parole or on probation that on March seventeenth they can register to vote? I mean, this is historic, that the governor signed the bill, and we have so many people in Plainfield that don't know the law, who haven't been informed of it, and it's so important that we get this out to everyone. Also, April first is census. We have not seen anything on this agenda announcing and informing our residents to make sure they're counted. I mean, the, you gotta know, Ron, you wear the button well, so. But we're still waiting for last year's reports on marketing. We still don't know what our marketing dollars are doing and what is our value of, who are we trying to attract to Plainfield? I think we've been waiting for it, but nothing's come out to be publicly known. Again, the website still is poorly managed, and it's just crazy that we can't get information for the residents. People ask, and every week, the mayor sends his newsletter out, I read it. God forbid trying to find it a week later because you wanna go back to it because you can't find it in any of the archives, and it's like lost in space. So I mean, these things actually need to be, we have clouds, we have things to keep our information there, but you can't ever go back to where the mayor's newsletter was to refer to something that was going on, to send it to a resident we were talking to about. Oh, it's on the mayor's, oh, I deleted it accidentally, they'll tell me. Well, I can't tell you where to find it because you won't be able to find it because IT in the city is behind twenty years. Thank you.
Good evening, Monday, three-oh-three Orange Place, and the executive director of Second Street Youth Center, actually planning to make Charles last to bring up the twenty-twenty census. So we wanted to, first of all, thank the administration for the work that Mr. West is doing, leading the Complete Count Committee for the city of Plainfield. I sit on the city Complete Count Committee as well as the county Complete Count Committee, and right now, the actual work that we're doing, Plainfield is being used as a model for other parts of the county, so I wanted to publicly say that. Now, my challenge is to the council, because the council, we're asking that the council get behind the work of the nonprofit that has been given the grant to do census outreach here in Plainfield, and that has, that is Second Street Youth Center, we're actually only nonprofit that received a complete count grant from the state of New Jersey. And so we are actively seeking the council's partnership in supporting the app that we have developed to have all of the census information out and available for our residents because we want them to understand the safety that is in place. And we recognize the fear that they're experiencing, and we are working to ensure that they have individuals who are considered safe partners and safe faces to look at and to work with us. So we have an app, the city also, we partnered with the city for PSA, where we brought in Hector Camacho, and so there's gonna be an actual PSA that's going to be distributed as well. And we want to make sure that all the communication and the council people, you're the people in the community, right? You're the people in the community, not really the administration. So we thank the administration for all the work that it's doing, but we need the work and support of the council to get the word out, because if we do want more parking decks and we do want this, these streets paved, we need to ensure that everyone is counted so that we can get the necessary capacity infrastructure dollars, as well as dollars that flow to education, and the ultimate dollars that determine the percentage of representation that we have across the state of New Jersey. Thank you.
Same number, I intend a motion to close public comment. All in favor? Any opposition or abstentions? Councilman Davis, you got a question?
Yes, so I had two questions that were areas of concern for me. So the one, the resident brought up where property owners were charging for parking. Can we just look into that? Because it was my understanding at one point that property owners had to supply off-street parking to the residents, and it wasn't supposed to be charged, or then they charge for off-street parking?
If I can jump in, I believe it was, you're talking about the Quinn, right?
That's one of, that's not the only one.
The Quinn does not charge for parking, they charge if you want a garage. It's the only, and I, and I know that because I was over there. If you want a garage, then you pay a fee for a garage, but you don't pay for a parking space.
If you want an extra spot, you pay for parking, I asked for that. Okay, so.
Other question?
That wasn't the only question I heard about it, and I wasn't sure which you were speaking about, but I, I thought it was my understanding that they were at least supposed to give me one parking spot, is that correct, Mr. Dappi or Mr. Mencella? Do we know? Are property owners required to give parking spots to their residents?
Property owners?
To give it for free or provide it?
Are they?
My, my understanding is that parking is not required, however, you cannot, under our local ordinance, charge extra for a parking space. If that, and we have advised, we have been notified by tenants of that practice, and we've advised landlords that that's not permissible in the city of Plainfield. If anyone else is aware of that practice, let us know, you know, myself, Ms. Chas.
Okay, thank you. So my second question is, so I know they brought up that they have to bring money orders to pay for parking spaces. I hope, it's my hope that we aren't telling residents that we only accept money orders, and I've heard from other departments, from residents, that other departments are telling them that they don't accept personal checks or they don't accept cash. And I just wanna make sure, Mr. West, that we reiterate to not only our department heads but our department heads, we iterate to our divisions and our units that we accept money orders and we accept personal checks and we accept cash through the tax office because that sometimes becomes a cause for concern for residents when they are looking to pay for various things, including reverse certificates, parking permits, and other things.
I couldn't say it any better. You re-signed the city policy very well.
Thank you. We can just, department heads, if we can just reiterate that to the division heads and the units, because it is not a senior problem. I've heard it over and over again, even after we've repeated these at these council meetings, and it becomes a deterrent for residents to want to do business with the city.
Yeah, within the last three months, we have updated our policies and all of the departments have been notified that checks are accepted.
Thank you, Ray. I intend a motion to adjourn?
So.
All in favor? Any opposition, abstentions? We adjourn.